Lead us in a word of prayer, please.
Father, I just wanna thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the moisture coming, dear Lord. We thank you for all that you provide to us and do for us. I pray to Lord for those who are sick. I pray a special healing on their bodies, dear Lord. I pray to Lord for each one in here that's going through something. They all do. I pray to Lord for comfort and peace. Uh, continue, dear Lord, with this uh, building and this county. I ask that you will bless it. I pray to Lord that your guidance through each and every decision will be solely based on you. And I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, we're gonna do a favor for the chief deputy. And we're gonna go ahead and skip all the way down to item J. Which is considered discussed to take action on approving a waiver for Tony Sanchez, who's a sole proprietor. For workman's comp liability for painting the wall and countertop replacement at the sheriff's office. Does anybody have, what was the amount?
Yeah, this is just a requirement and either anybody that works on a county building. Either has to have a worker's comp certificate on file or the waiver and um. Mister Sanchez did not have worker's comp coverage, so he's asking the court to approve his waiver.
Uh, how much was it?
Oh, I don't know.
Alright, most of my Mr. Rain second by Mister Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Mister Sipчик, you can head to weather first. Alright, back to the consent agenda.
We have regular minutes of January the twenty seventh, uh, and I emailed all of that over the weekend. A special meeting on February the third. I do not have a personnel report. Certification of additional revenue. I do not have any of that. We do have amendment changes by fund. There's two s- two of them.
Uh, yes, there are two sets of those.
And investment report none. I have an auditor's report unreconciled of two, four, twenty twenty five. I have no fiduciary financial report. The departmental financial reports, I have Johnny Clark, which I emailed that out too, to you guys and. Constables one and two, DMV and tax collector, JP's one and two, and the sheriff. On the bills, claims and accounts, I have five stats. And on the cybersecurity, I have Becky Rogers, Jay Brudzado. Basil Kentrell. John Brawley, Randall Phelps, Ted Goldstone, Justin Harris, Kent Howell. Wendell Lott, Elton McCoy, Salvador Moreno, Jesse Overton. Joshua Pasquale, Daniel Piper, Austin Pittaway, Colton Preston, John Simpson. Alex Chobridge, Larry Watson, Jason Wager, Rudolph Wetzel. Lynn Brownlee, Monique Castro, Jesse Daniels, Braden Duck. Jordan Duck, Brendan Finch, Sierra Fraley, Justin Martin, Andrea Maxwell. Steve McKinnon. Stacy Parker. Is that yours? Oh, okay. Rebecca Rainey, April Ross, J.C. Ross, Mark Smith, James T. Candace Tucker, Michael West, Bailey Edgar, Wendy Irwin, Jessica Fox, Bailey Knowles. Susan Mayne, Chloe Mayne, Melissa Peoples, Jeanette Ramirez, and Darla Turner. And then on open meetings and public, public information, I have Jason Wager on both. Jennifer Billings for both, April Ross on both, Ronnie Wilson on both, and Jay Brudzado on both. And I have no purchasing acknowledge.
On the financial report, it is just a regular meeting report. As of February fourth. General fund checking and this is the actual ending balance column. Three, or this is all funds for general fund, three million, six hundred ten thousand, two fourteen eighteen. Road and bridge, one million, two hundred eighty thousand, six thirty five, thirty five. All funds on deposit for the county general ledger balance as of February fourth, ten million, six hundred sixty four thousand. Eighty one dollars, four cents. And this time it was the abbreviated version, Judge. Well, this is my, this is not the big report. I'll give you that for the big report also. Then there is the statement of revenue and expense. And it's by fund showing original budget, current budget, period activity, fiscal activity, encumbrances. And the variance favorable or unfavorable is. Revenue over expenses.
Okay, any questions for?
No, but the last set of bills does have those.
What now? I'm sorry.
Just, just for your knowledge, the last set of bills for affirmative have the.
It's for the wildfire defense. Declared an emergency last meeting.
I didn't keep copies. Um, I think this one is, no, this is not, this is a consent agenda.
Okay. So we do have a budget adjustment where y'all declared an emergency for a community wildfire defense. And an amount of seven hundred ninety three dollars and ninety nine cents.
What was that one for?
Let me see it again. This one I need to add, oh, this is moving. This for the computers. There wasn't enough in the budget, so this is just moving it from the road and bridge contingency. To. The wildfire defense. Just to cover the difference.
Alright, any questions for me, commission? You entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion by Mister Rain, second by Mister Wilson. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Seems new to you, Doctor, with all this signing and stuff. Should count for some kind of rehab.
Yeah, I could use my left hand.
When they gonna fix that?
I don't know, I go to. I'd have to come in, I'd be six months and I'd take three years.
What does it make you? That feeling better?
Uh, yeah, it never did bother me. The whole deal was disowned. It wasn't. I just couldn't use it anymore.
Keep on your seat in case you need to get a darn refund.
No, give refunds.
You got those, huh?
Those working lots of teeth for all year, man.
Oh, except I forgot paid not to show up.
They probably did, I don't know.
Of course Michelle was looking for the Eagles, she said, well, I just, just wanted somebody else to win. I said, alright, but during the regular season, I don't wanna hear you going. Go Chiefs, go Chiefs. You done left the fold.
Chiefs left the fold too.
Jimmy Johnson maybe retiring.
Jimmy Johnson? He plays it, he's, he's, he's looking to interview him, he's a short guy.
Why you two?
Been doing it a long time. Still seem pretty short. Is that it? Okay, uh, burn ban. It's the pleasure of the commission's court.
Leave it on.
Yep, leave it on. We're leaving the burn ban on, Ginger. Alright, B, emergency amendments.
None to file, Judge.
None to file.
It's later in the.
Uh, C, ratify user agreement, purchase driver's records. Of driver record monitoring services between the Department of Public Safety and state of Texas DPS and the county of eastern Christian God.
Pretty much self explanatory, it's just an agreement with DPS to purchase driver's records.
Why are we purchasing them?
Not purchasing. Um, look at, um, Tac used to do it for us for people that drive for the county and we now have to do it ourselves.
Okay, so this is like a self monitoring deal where we can keep up with our employees?
Yeah, an entering agreement.
That could be a problem.
At least most time I'm getting one on the way out of town Walmart.
Okay, I entertain a motion to ratify the user agreement. Motion by Mister Wilson, second by Mister Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Uh, motion carries. D, discuss, consider signing resolution opposing elimination of county wide polling place, Mister Rogers.
Got to write a look at it. And, um. I did take out the bills that it referred to. Because there could be more pop up. Is this revised, this is revised though, isn't it? This is revised from last time, yes.
Wasn't it emailed out to us last night?
If it has the bills on it, it's the wrong one. All I did was take out the bills, the bill references. And this will need the county seal on it. Somebody have one that needs one?
Why does it need the county seal on it?
Every, everybody else is doing it. Uh, that's just to set us apart, knowing that when they look at it, oh, eastern county. Opposes it even though it states in here.
Even though it's signed by the county judge and court commissioner and county clerk?
Right, and what other. What other counties are doing is just putting their seal here.
Oh, I'm gonna put it by my name.
Put it wherever you need to. It just needs to have a. Seal on it. That doesn't say elections.
And our legislative committee wants a copy of this. So I'll get them one whenever, uh.
Oh, after it's finalized, okay. And then you'll, do you need two?
Okay, uh, any questions for the commissioners?
And I did print out everything that was to do with elections. And it's a stack this big. So. It's just hope and pray they do the right thing instead of mess everything up.
Any questions for, okay, I entertain a motion. To sign the resolution. Mess, mess up our, our citizens' ability to get voted, so. Motion by Mister Crenshaw, second by Mister Rain, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
Do you need one sign too?
Do you need another one?
I gave Kathy one. I've changed it to orange for twenty twenty five, so she has one.
Okay, uh, E, discuss, consider transfer funds from. From one account to another account to pay out the comp time for Becky Rogers, Miss Rogers.
I have two hundred and thirty five point five comp time hours and about the same PTO hours. There's really no way that I can take all that. And so I would like to pay this out because I have another election coming up. In May, which is gonna entail more comp time, but it quits accruing after a certain point.
How much is that?
Money wise, it is four thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and thirty cents. Four thousand, three hundred dollars and eighty cents.
You gotta take care of all of it?
Yes, ever, ever. No, not PTO. I'm working on taking PTO right now. I've got two hundred and something hours of it that I'm trying to whittle down. But. With the, this, it goes into overtime anyway. When it goes over. And I'm, I'm trying to get it down, guys, but it's just kinda. Well. I didn't get Christmas break because of Ranger. But I am working on it.
But you're gonna start running out of.
Uh, my PTO's already quit accruing, so.
I don't know, I'm talking about budget wi- wise. You're fixing to run out of budget stuff, you know?
Well, currently I have nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars in my overtime budget. This payout will leave four thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars in that. With hopefully just one election left. But that's, that's just my overtime budget, not my judges and clerks or anything else.
Which is what we've used that money for if we needed to, for the judges and the clerks.
We've used the judges and clerks for overtime.
We don't have any that had to come out of there. Okay. Anyway, we need to get a, we need to get a hold of this deal. I mean, I know, but I mean, I'm taking. Keep thinking we're gonna streamline this deal and.
So do I. You know, I, my plans were to go to Colorado for Christmas and I didn't get to do that and anyway, so.
Well, start, start, uh, working on the PTO side of that and start getting that down as we can.
Already have been, sir.
Alright, any questions for me, uh? Commissioners, entertain a motion to pay Miss Rogers out of the, uh, lose the funds to pay her out of the. Other balance. Well, I mean. We don't have any choice on the bill. Even as far as what do we pay, pay her now.
Is that just two elections?
No, that, that is from last budget when y'all picked me out. That, so that was. From June. Of last year. And it was November and the Ranger recall in the primary. And the November, or. Only took half. Of the payout for, in the previous budget. So that was November and the Ranger recall and.
June of twenty twenty four?
Yes.
Yeah.
Drew.
Now.
Now. And so you just carry those funds over in the new budget? Which started out October one?
Uh, there's a employee time record in here. October first, her worker's comp carry forward was sixty seven point six one.
Okay, any further questions? Motion by Mister Rain. Need a second by Mister Wilson. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
Thank y'all very much. You'll get that too many. Alright, thank you, cause our, our legislators like the session.
Becky, keep me posted on how you're working on that other, on the PTO side.
Okay, um. I've, I've been coming in late and so there's PTO used on. My last paycheck and this paycheck.
Yeah, discuss, consider advertising, accept bids for road material purchase and bulk fuel purchases, Miss Key.
It is time to start advertising for bids. The road material contract is up April first. And the fuel contract is up June twenty seventh. I would like to push that to July first. Just where it's not that weird date, um, but I need, I need the court to request that I advertise for bids. Well, I just go ahead and get permission for both, so I don't forget to come back.
Most of my Mr. Rain second by Mister Maxwell. Those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. But you're probably gonna, you're gonna do this in July.
Well, the con, no, I actually start the whole process like now to get bids in for. April first contract, contract start on road materials. And as soon as I have that, I start into the fuel, so. But I just wanna change that contract. There'll be like three days there that y'all cannot purchase fuel. Uh, but I wanna start the new contract July first instead of June twenty seventh.
Uh, G, discuss, consider ratification of Conley and Company LLP fiscal year twenty twenty four audit engagement letter.
It's that time and they're actually supposed to be onsite today, starting the field work. And Judge Holam has already signed the engagement letter. This is just asking for ratification and filing it.
Because we have to have an audit before the audit. Anyway. It is what it is. And that's every year, isn't it?
It's annual.
Alright, I entertain a motion. Motion by Mister Wilson. Second by Mister Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. County auditor to file fiscal year twenty twenty five community wildfire defense budget.
I gave each of you a copy, um, the court approved an emergency amendment of four hundred forty thousand dollars. For payroll items and computer equipment. This is the four hundred forty thousand dollars. Um, it does not include the budget adjustment. That was just approved, moving from contingency to wildfire defense.
That's just money that, uh, we've got, uh, the court's information. We've got a call at ten thirty. For the longest time we were sitting around, Stephen and I were looking at each other going, well, I wonder when they're gonna let that money go. And finally, we got ahold of Kevin Coleman with, uh, Langford. He said, well, man, I'd, I'd email this guy right here. Guy named Bruce Woods. I said, alright, so I emailed him and got tied up doing some stuff, didn't realize he'd email me back, but he called and he said, man, I'm sorry for the. For the confusion, he said, but you guys can go ahead and do, start hiring, purchasing, whatever you need to do. I'm like, well, that's good to know. So we, we moving forward, but at ten thirty, we're supposed to have a meeting with this guy. And, well, can't, can't have more than. Well, I can't have anybody but Robert, I guess, because I have form. Uh, but Robert's gonna be here and Stephen's gonna be here and the rest is provided to it. Anyway, we're gonna try to get some of this stuff, uh, figured out because it's like, uh. It's like the, uh. The grants not that specific about where you pigeonhole stuff, you know? So we wound up, we needed to get laptops for, uh, Stephen and, and his two specialists. And there was no. Really, there's really not a pigeonhole to stick that on. So I don't know if we're fixing to eat that or what the deal is or. It does mention in the grant that there are tough books. I don't know if we're just fixing to, we just bought those three to. Give to some other department head that's, you know, rotating out and then spending the money on the tough books or whatever. But we've got a bunch of questions like that to try to, you know, I mean, what do we use for, uh. You know, Stephen's all wound up because he ain't got a stapler yet. Think if you just go past most of these county offices, you can find one just laying around.
It's probably hidden underneath all of your papers under desk.
Yeah, so. So anyway, that's, uh, that's where we're at at ten thirty. Is this, is this what we're gonna pay these guys? Just to actual pay?
Well, that's, that's.
That's to go into the, the Langford?
Yeah, yes and no, James. That's not a dollar amount like hourly. That's the rest of this fiscal year if they would be hired today. It's not a total dollar amount. It's adj, it's adjusted for. Where we're at in our fiscal year.
And this is based on the rates in the application, so I think.
So you know, we talked about not paying them that much, not paying them more than our guys. You pay them that rate, you're paying them more than our guys. You're paying them.
So the, the SARS and. And the equipment operators gonna be different, hey? So both of them gonna be running equipment, though, aren't they? So both of them gonna be running equipment though, aren't they?
So how are you gonna justify that? I don't know, that's the way they wrote it up.
Well, the, the other thing is, we've got, we've got some, we've got some flexibility in the. That we could go back at least once and get the Forest Service to change stuff. Because I, I even asked that Woods guy, he said, look, he said, you know, he said, you're, you're. Budgeted for, for two per precinct, you know, he said, if you guys uh get up there and realize, well, we don't need. We don't need eight, we need six. He said, you can, you can move those funds around and, and pay them for more money if they were an equipment operator or whatever. So there's, there's some latitude in, in doing that.
Think what James is saying though, if these rates are making more than our guys are.
I think you can still, I think you can still, not, even though it's budgeted for that, I think you could still pay them a different amount, if that's what you're saying.
You'll have to figure that out before you say hire somebody or.
I mean, it, what's our rate right now for rolling seventeen thirty-five?
For, Lord, I don't know, James, I have to look, cause it, the numbers I use are, are different. Because everybody's a little bit different, because they figure in longevity and all that into the rates that I use to enter into the system.
Well, I just, I just think that you're not gonna be able to hire. Like four sawers. Four equipment operators and pay them different, I don't think, so they're gonna both be doing the same job. Whether they're out with a chainsaw or whether.
Well, and I still have a problem paying them more than what our, our guys are making is right now with Luke's grant.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't wanna pay them more than.
Yeah.
What our guys are making. And I think.
Everybody on your crew's gonna wanna go over there. Yeah. Pay them twenty bucks a hour or whatever.
No, I think there's, I think there's the latitude of. Of saying, this is all we're gonna, this is all we're gonna pay them. And like I said, I, I think. I don't think that's an issue. Cause we don't wanna sit there and suck off the hands, but then again, you're looking at. Hiring eight additional people and people aren't just falling out of the.
Oh, no, you're not. It'll be really tough to find eight people.
That's why I was saying that if we could figure out some kind of. Yeah, if we could find. Four good people, you know, and then use that money in another area, then, then we've got that latitude. From what they're telling me, they'll, they'll work with us on moving stuff around like that, but they're, but it's like a one-time deal, you know? So you need to go uh, we need to go up with one master change. Need these areas here changed and stuff, because when we go back and start nickel and diming them, they're just gonna say whatever. And he did say, he said, look, he said, I understand, you, you may very well uh. Can't find eight people to, to go to work, you know, so I mean, he said, it's not, we're not gonna penalize you because you can't find employees, you know, so.
So Steve is gonna be running the show, right, Judds, that's what I was gonna clarify, I mean, he's just gonna do the hiring, tell them what they're gonna make?
Who?
Not us, right?
Well, I mean, you guys, I'd, I'd like you guys involved in it, yeah.
I want, I mean, that's fine to be involved, I, I was under the impression that he's gonna hire them, go through that place. Tell us they're gonna make.
Here's, here's the other thing, and I, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get too far, I guess we can, I guess we can discuss it since we're talking about this. Is that, one of the things that we had originally talked about, or one of the original proposals was, is that. Uh, that we could hire, we could contract with somebody to do the work. But then that would impact the county's ability to buy the equipment. Uh, but if, if we're contracting with somebody. There's really less of a need for the equipment, so I'm not, I'm, I'm not pushing that, I'm just throwing that out there as an option. That it would sure be, in a way, it would be cleaner to contract with somebody.
You would think, but it's not, it don't mean the longer, cause then you gotta bid it all out.
Yeah.
And, and go through all of that qualification stuff, where you're grading people sitting here at the table.
Yeah.
Not only getting contracts and like for five years for the money that we got either, I don't think it costs way more.
Well, it wouldn't be for, obviously it wouldn't be for five years, it'd be for, hey, here's your job, you need to go from here, from point A to point B. And then give us a bill and then we go from there.
But you'd have to rebid it for every one of those.
That's the part that, that's the part that worried.
I mean, it's if you, if you start breaking down in the individual section. Bonnie's gonna be really busy here grading stuff.
That's what they're hiring these three, that's what I'm trying to get figured out, is Steve going around and get a spot, you know, we talked about fuel. That's what I was wanting to know.
My, my thought, and I, I'm leaving this up, you know, getting direction from y'all, but my thought is, is that. Steve's gonna be as involved or not involved as you want him to be. So if you need him to do a particular deal, then we need to sit there and line him out. I've had a talk with him and he's, he's ready to, he's ready to rock and roll whichever way we go. His only concern is, naturally, is let's say everybody gets their two. Extra and they're out there and they're, you know, and he's coordinating and, I mean. Put all eight in one spot and say, hey, this is a problem, this is our biggest problem area, let's, let's all attack this together with all the equipment, all the people. But he's still gonna need help from you guys, because like he said, he said, look, I'm a fireman, I'm not a heavy equipment guy. And I don't know that, you know, are they supposed to have a, a flagger out here, are they supposed to have whatever, so. I would really, I would really need y'all to kinda go by and say, hey, don't do it this way. Because when we do it this way, we start pulling telephone poles down or something, I mean, but other than that, I think. With y'all's input, I think he would say.
They're, they're in his budget right now, I mean, the budget they gave us.
That's what I want. Today Steve's two specialists need to run these eight guys. One of them needs to run and the other one, in my mind, do the computer work, but.
Yeah.
But that's not how the grant's written. That's not what their job is in the grant. The grant is their, their community outreach and education. I mean, that's the way it's spelled out in the grant.
But I sure think they can help out.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you gotta, you gotta be articulated in a way to make it understand. That their primary function is education and community outreach.
Yeah. And like I said, one, I think his first hire, when, when, when we tele pull the trigger, is gonna be the data. It, the, the data entry person, because he's got somebody that's got a pretty strong background. That we can send out to the different precincts to say, hey, we need to, we need to get this documented and. Then they take care of that for you.
My idea is that I was saying, we don't need too many chiefs on the engines.
No.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, who's gonna be over them two machines or over them two guys? Is it Ronnie or is it Steve's two uh specialists? That's what I.
Those two guys are in Steve's budget, they're not even in our budget.
Right.
So they're, it's underneath him.
Okay.
You talking about the two extras?
Yes.
Yeah, well, but I think, I think in what Stephen's saying, and Stephen, feel free to pop in here. Cause I'm saying, I'm speaking a lot for you right now, is that all he's saying is, look, I just, you know, let's all, let's sit down. He's gonna sit down with you and say, where, where, where do you think your absolute critical problem area is? And drive out there with you and get lined out, and then he's gonna take care of documenting. Uh, the stuff prior to docu- documented afterwards. And then, and then supervising, and it may take, you know, getting precinct, you know, two over there as well. They're, so now you got four guys on that deal, but all he's saying is, just give me some help on, if they're out there working. I don't know that they're doing something that maybe.
Right.
That is not, you know, best practices or something, you know? Cause the, the last thing we wanna do is have people out there tearing stuff up.
That's, you know, that's what I'm talking about out there, Judds or whatever, cause I always look at the electric companies or whatever, and I've watched them, and I've worked for them. They'll have a guy that runs all them crews and he keeps them going and saying, this is much footage we need today. And he tells their people, hey, this guy ain't getting a gun, he's tearing your stuff up, and then they take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, is that how it's gonna work or? We got a different idea?
No, I, I think that's, I think that's, the idea that Stephen and I talked about was that it was gonna be a. It was gonna be kind of a hybrid deal, you know, they, we didn't wanna take everything completely, obviously, out of y'all's hands. Cause we do want your input, we do want your, your experience and things like that, and, and that of your, your hands as well, you know, your hands drive by and go, what the heck are they doing there? At least pick up the phone and call you, and you call Stephen or, or however that works. Cause we wanna do it safe, we don't wanna spend more time repairing stuff.
Yeah.
Than what we're, we're mitigating, I guess is my question.
On some of the concerns, mine is if, if these two specialists then are going to be direct supervisors. Over these four crews or however many. That, I feel drastically changes their job description that's written in the grant. And not only changing their description, it, it alters the percentage. So that'd be a question to ask today at our ten o'clock, is of these eight people, can we put, just example, one or two direct supervisors? Another side of this, I'm assuming, these people are gonna spend quite a bit of time in y'all's yards, that's where the equipment's gonna be stored, right?
Uh, we have, so we're talking about. But if you're gonna put a tank at Carbon, that's probably where your equipment needs to be, Carbon, a generalized location. That way, fuel-wise, if you need maintenance, then you can bring it to a barn. You can carry it to any one of our barns and get in there and do maintenance. But if, if, if I, if I was you and I was keeping my fuel tank at Carbon, that's where I want all my equipment generally housed, is there. That way you can fuel it, breeze it and go.
You have a barn?
No, just yard.
Well, you put one up, you know?
Yeah, just, just one question goes this morning is, now can we arrange these eight funds for these eight? So I thought, I thought one of the areas of differentiating pay between one guy and another of, of group two is one of them had a CDL.
Yeah, that generally is what it says, but that's what they come up with when they wrote the grant. Our guys all basically make the same amount of money. The only, the only distinguishing part is uh longevity. Roadhands all make the same dollar amount, foremen's all make the same dollar. Same way we do here in the quarter, I should make do with cheap debt and personnel like that.
So does the fuel and maintenance need to be put in this budget, please?
Yes, sir, there are a lot of lines we need in this budget. But I don't know if that falls under operational.
How are you gonna do maintenance? I mean, there's no budget line for maintenance, would there?
Oh, the grant's got an M and O ma- maintenance line, need to fuel and stuff. But you know, that's, that's another thing we're talking about. If, if we all had equipment in our yard and we're all generating POs for that equipment. There ain't no way he's gonna be able to keep up with what we're generating for that equipment, maintenance wise. So it'll, it'll have to be a, my thought, a centralized location like Carbon. Where he's got his fuel and everything like that, then if he needs to go buy something, go buy it, generate PO right there for themselves. Work, working completely out and not having, keep up, wants to come to my barn and work in the barn all day long, I, I mean, hell, there's a kid on the desk. So that, that ain't no big deal, but.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that's gonna have to happen. If all, if all eight are over here. Something breaks down, they, they're gonna have to go to the closest barn, it doesn't make sense to haul it somewhere else.
Right.
One of the, one of the things, and like I said, we, we. This, we're, we're plowing new ground, this grant. Is that. You know, do you, do you hire who you can, but you pay them a little bit more? Because they are over all the maintenance.
What we do for running.
You know?
So, I mean, if we want, you wanna make one of them a foreman or two of them foremen, I can see that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's kinda what I was talking about. Maybe.
Two, two of the CDL people just class them family's foremans in their, in, in the line item to pay them four minutes hour.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, the reason I'm saying that is that then you've got, you can. Like I said, if, if we're gonna have problems potentially hiring eight anyway.
Yeah.
We can only fi- hire seven, we could use that eighth position to pay a little bit more for the, for the two foreman positions that we're talking about. And I apologize, the problem is, you know, the way we have to do things. I can't sit there and bring this stuff up to y'all unless we're at a meeting, you know, so I mean, so I'm stuck with talking to one commissioner at a time.
I'd say my big, I mean, it ain't no big deal, I'm just asking what, you know, how are we gonna run this deal?
We'll put the whole thing in your lap, man, right now, I can get it done.
Congratulations.
I make that motion.
The way it is right now, it'd all be in Steve's. Come up with an ideal for location, like I say, like we talked about the other day, if you're gonna put it at Carbon. I really think that's where you need to be your main base.
Yeah, what do you have to say?
Well, my first thought is, is to go from Carbon to way up north of Ranger.
Yeah.
Do your work is, we were talking earlier, it's ten o'clock before we get any work done.
Yeah.
And travel time, and that's just a concern line, y'all know this area.
Best about ten hours a week. I mean, you got five years or better to do this, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's really not. Not an issue.
Yeah, yeah, we don't bring the equipment in every night.
No.
We, we leave it at locations, I say that, we'll, we'll drive our graders in, or we do, drive our graders in every night. But we're mowing this state, the tractor stays out there. Wherever we're at, wherever we stop that afternoon is where the tractor stops, stays and we come back and pick it up the next day.
We don't, we're, everything ours is spread out, we got places we park everything. Cause we got some in the house, we'll put two blades over there, two over here, one in the middle. Cause if you rode a man eating there, you know.
Are you, y'all using that old pickup?
Yeah.
Okay, cause he's needing a pickup.
Well, I thought we would sit there and talk about that as well, but at the ten thirty deal is that we. They're telling us to go and proceed on the thing.
On the five?
Yeah.
Mr. Ray's my immediate names that we were discussing earlier, I just got the text.
I could say, I, I told him he could come get mine, since I wasn't usually.
I thought mine was gonna have to be in the body shop today, and he just got a text.
You're old enough to hitchhike, so why are you whining about this deal?
You got somebody picking up?
Are you keeping your mileage?
So far, all I've done is just security.
Okay.
And anything else has been minimal.
What, since we got everybody trapped here, does anybody have, uh, uh, had concerns, questions or anything? I mean, I know we're just at the, at the beginning stages of this deal, we've still got it. Like I said, I'm just glad they told us to proceed, but, and I'm glad that we've got this ten thirty meeting and we can ask the Forest Service. And that guy was, like I said, once he called me, he was Johnny on the spot, he said, man, he said, here's my phone number, you call me, you got any questions, you got whatever. I said, well, I'd like to have a meeting with y'all. Like y'all have with Jasper County, now I'll tell you this, my underst- Like y'all have with Jasper County. Now, I'll tell you this, my understanding is, we're way ahead of where the cities are at.
Yeah.
Cause I think they're just now starting to send their stuff out.
I'll be honest, I'm curious to where the other seven that got the grant that's not using Langford are.
I don't think, I don't think they're up with us.
Because there, Langford, I think, doing four of them, but there's, there's eleven total in the state of Texas that got the grant.
The cities reached out and wanted to piggyback off of ours, so I sent them the specs and all that, so that's what they were waiting on.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, they're behind, but I mean, like I said, we, we need to, and the last I heard. Correct me if I'm wrong, was that there was, uh, and the guy told me.
I'm sure there's a contract that needs to be signed.
Cause there's like four to six, I may be wrong, but I think they were saying it's a four to six week reimbursement timeline. But there's not like, you gotta do it at the first of the month. They're like talking about, as you get that stuff, if you wanna submit it. It's in the, it's in the, it's in the train.
So Steve's already, you already got somebody you're gonna hire for your specialist?
Um, I have four people that, any, any of the four be good. I just have not sent out to them yet what our decision is.
Yeah, and.
Somebody, if I make the offer today, they'll take it, but if it's two weeks from now, everybody's like, no, I'm going somewhere else.
Yes, I'm.
So I haven't left, I've kept them informed.
I guess my question is, if you told them a dollar amount, what they're gonna make? Yeah.
Yes, and they're interviewing of the two specialists, yes.
But it was based off the grant amounts. Because a specialist's were a different position.
Yeah, I don't care about specialists, it's just that.
Yeah.
Wait, Fred's not there in the, yes.
Forty thousand, eighteen thousand and three fifty.
You got four people, Steve, sir, that you got, that you have. Well, that's a good step.
We have one in, in one area, it stands out, but if we're drastically gonna change their job description, then that's not okay.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
I personally would think you'd be better off making two of the heavy equipment operator foremen's and putting them in charge and making sure the operation.
That'd be great if they'll give us that flexibility.
Yeah, I, I think they will, I think they will, uh, uh, they've been, they seem like they're very flexible. But they're also, this is kind of a new deal for them, so they're kind of feeling their way along. On, you know, what it actually looks like in, in real life.
Yeah, but they're not breaking, I mean, these grants have been around for years, just Texas has never got one.
Yeah.
So, and, and just like, we could pick up and call Stevens or E-Rat, one of them, they could pick up and call Louisiana, Georgia. California, let's say, how y'all doing this?
Yeah. Well, I, I like Robert's idea of, of making two of those foreman positions.
Yeah, I, I think that would be the easiest.
I think it's the easiest way to go and I think it's, it's, it's more realistic than saying, we're gonna have eight hands. Because when these guys have one open and they have problems filling it.
Yeah.
Much less eight. And what do you think about that?
You seen Sam Marigan?
I just don't think you could dump everything on the specialists and still have them go out and do everything that's, they have to do to qualify for the grant. The data entry, the data collection, I, I think's fine, but then you start putting them in charge and making sure crews are doing their jobs. And I don't think you can do that. I just don't think they got the time to do all of it also.
Well, and again, you're, 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 it's like Stephen's saying, you're, you're telling me to change directions.
Right.
Right, right in the middle of the process, now, now I've gotta start looking for this person.
Yeah.
And then you've got the restriction of the grants.
That, that, yeah, but the grant's ready for those people to do the outreach and the education part.
So like, who's over like P O's that does fuel and all that?
Whatever he wants to be.
Okay.
I think, uh, the, the part I do like about the, about kinda pushing it over on Stephen's deal is that the. Is that we're, if we're doing it, it, it brings the consistency.
Yeah.
To, to the process, you know, once they learn, this is how we handle the P O's, this is how this stuff needs to go on the computer and this is how we get the reimbursement. We do all of that, then you've got that one, we may, we may mess it up all the way through the process, but.
Use that brush better, we're fixing to get.
Yeah, exactly. And I think there, there needs to be some coordination between the four of y'all about, this is, this is what I need to get taken care of. This is my top.
Well, but that's, that's good to an extent because it is reaching the end goal of what we've got. But the other side of that is the critical infrastructure has gotta be a target area.
Yeah.
Uh, on that, because that's the way the grant's written, is, is for the protection of the critical infrastructure. So.
But you.
Have an electrical substation or.
But those critical, those critical structures are in your, in y'all's precinct, so you, so you guys could say.
Well, that, yeah, but what I'm saying is, is if you've got the choice between going and cleaning up around a water treatment facility. Or just a road.
Yeah.
You, you gotta go to the water treatment facility first because the critical infrastructure is what the grant's written for.
No, I agree, uh, but that's where, that's where he, he's gonna have to rely on you guys to help him say, this is what, this is what needs to be done first.
And so, like, when we get to Greenlight to buy the equipment, Steve's gonna be over it, Mr. Rains?
I'm not gonna be over it.
Okay, so you're the one that be picking up the phone and saying, hey, we're ready to buy these five trailers and we need these pickups. Is that right? I just asked.
I will work with you on, on getting this done.
I, I, I would think so.
Yeah.
But I'm just gonna go directly to him, he's gonna end up having to be, if, if he's doing the paperwork, he's writing the P O for him.
That's what I'm, I'm just asking, who's gonna be the one to pick up phone orders and stuff?
No, y'all don't chase him off at the beginning of the deal, we've only, he's, he's, he's one week into, he's, he's one week into being paid.
Yeah.
Well, if he's got his first check, he's in.
Scratch all what we said just in the last fifteen minutes, just scratch all that. We're just talking hypothetically. Yeah, once we give that first.
Wayne Hunter last week and I said, well, who's gonna be the new fire chief for Olden? He said, Steve Forbes. I said, oh, okay, I said, I must have misspoke. So are you, are you, are you still, you staying there?
Yeah.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Okay, yeah.
That we discussed in our first meeting.
Okay.
No, I don't, I didn't have a problem with him staying there, it's not like a.
Genuinely speaking, that's what he needs to do, you know?
Yeah, yeah, keep his, keep his feet in the fire, literally. All right, any other questions that we can answer? I mean, as far as that, I know there's, I know we're at the beginning stages and I know there's gonna be a whole lot more questions, but.
A long process.
Yeah, but I, I wanted you guys to know that we're, we're, it, it's not like we're sitting around with our feet up on the desk. We've been trying to think some of these things through, been in com- contact with Robert about, well, what, you know, what's. What's your vision moving forward on the deal?
They, they just make things too hard sometimes, overcomplicate simple measures.
Oh, I guarantee it is, I guarantee it is. I think so, but you know, it's like, it's always like, deal.
But Ronnie, here's my concern, is we've had one of these before and it was go, go, go do that. And then two days later, the emails started coming going, stop, 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 no, 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 no.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Never get the email.
Yeah, but we're under a different administration now, so hopefully there's gonna be a little bit better, a little, uh, way smoother. Uh, Kay, discuss and consider.
Aye.
What?
Would you, do you, do you even wanna file the budget? Uh, I'll make a motion on H to file the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Motion second, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Uh, so now we're on aye? How did I get so far ahead? Uh, discuss and consider declare an emergency and amend the community wildfire defense budget. And authorize payment to length of community management service invoice. Number six zero four four, the amount of a hundred and forty one thousand seven hundred ninety four dollars and forty cents. Now, this is what got Kevin motivated. I said, so, we need to figure out, are we able to proceed on these things? Because one of those is your invoice.
Yeah.
And he said, let me get right on that. So we got, we got a little motivation, a little movement on that, so. Anyway, that's, that's when I got with this Bruce Woods guy, so.
Do we have a paper, well, can that's needed? I'll do it in urgency. It, it should have all been in the documents Ginger sent out. Did everybody have it? It's, this one's for two hundred and fifty thousand. Yes, that's what we're gonna discuss right now.
That's the one.
So you should have the estimated fund balance, which I passed out before court. And emergency amendment. And the Langford invoice. And, um, Judge, Commissioner Rains and I all kind of talked about. What we think we need to get us through till we can figure something out. And this invoice is one hundred forty one thousand seven ninety four forty. And I imagine the next one will probably be pretty close to the same amount. So, um, we're thinking a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar emergency will get us through. And if we start getting reimbursements in four to six weeks, this will look a lot better. But I want to remind the court that, um, January tenth, the court declared a four hundred and forty thousand dollar emergency. Which leaves an estimated uncommitted remaining fund balance of three hundred ninety eight thousand four hundred six dollars and sixty six cents. If the court declares a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar emergency, that's going to leave less than two hundred and fifty thousand uncommitted in fund balance. And just pray we don't have an emergency, but we also have a capital murder trial coming up. That we're not gonna have fund balance to, to fund, so we're going to have to figure out something quickly.
I hear you. You gotta, you gotta spend money to make money on this deal. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, I'll just say this, at the end of the day. This. This grant, this nine million dollar grant is costing us money and especially costing us money upfront. I think once we start the reimbursement process, I think, I think we'll be fine. And ultimately, at the end of five years, then we're gonna own co- equipment that still has a lot of life in it. And, uh, and we will accomplish making our county safer. Uh, for the, from the threat of wildfires, which we've already had too. I mean, I never would have thought we had the first one, but after the first one, I thought, well, we're done with that. And here, here we had another, you know, uh. So, I, I love the idea of the, let's mitigate the fuel source along the county roads. And around the critical infrastructure, and hopefully that makes all of us safer. Because I can tell you, you can go right in that office right there and ask her, hey, what's the, what's your personal experience as a victim of wildfire? And there's stuff that's being, you know, that's being burned up, that's, that's, that can't be replaced, so, anyway, this. That's just my, this is, this is what I keep telling myself when I see all this money going out. Is that ultimately, it's gonna be a good deal, so, but thank you. Okay. Um.
We need to declare an emergency and amend the budget for two hundred and fifty thousand? Is that what the request is? Yes, and add the general ledger account, the budget line.
Okay, I'm gonna take your motion.
What budget's that gonna be paid out of, or?
This is still going to be out of the wildfire defense.
I'll make the motion for the emergency.
All right, motion by Mr. Rains, second. Second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
Now we need a motion second to pay Langford.
Create the line.
Okay.
That will be added to GL's. Emergency.
We have a motion.
I'll make it.
All right, motion by Mr. Rains, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. I did not smudge that, that was already smudged. All right, Kay, discuss and consider take action and approve amendment number one of the procurement policy for the twenty twenty. Glow Community Development Block Grant mitigation program, and then it has the contract number. Assuming you, that's the.
Yes, um, this was a finding in the, um, audit for the dam improvement grant. And that's D A M, um.
Sure, we'll go with that.
Um, so this is just to comply with what's required. It was a change in the, um, two CFR two hundred that we just need to incorporate into our procurement policy.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Rains.
Can you allow you to sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell, those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. I can tell you this, guys, the, with a little bit I sat in on, uh. Cat White Cotton from Langford. Doing battle with the Glow people, I'm telling you what, that young lady is sharp as a. No, this is, she worked with you. And I'm telling you, they, Glow was just, I mean, there was a whole panel of people.
We got two grants, we're adding more than two grants, we got thirty grants.
But she, she had every answer, every. I mean, she was just firing back and forth, they didn't catch her on nothing.
And even the follow-up, the questions they were asking, things I would have answered. She knew how to answer them better, um, so she's been great.
Yeah, she's been really good, really good. All right, we got one more motion.
I'm like, is that how Steve's gonna be too, next?
We're all gonna sit here and cock our heads when he talks.
Yeah. All right, motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Wilson, adjourn all those in favor say aye. Same sign. We're glad to see our friend.